Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beautiful day that you have presented today, August 1st. And Lord, we have something coming up nationwide here in Cameron County called National Day Out. So I pray this morning for the enthusiasm, for the results of this program, to get people aware of what's going on. We continue to pray for safety during the summer, last summer month before school starts, for the beaches of Cameron County, for the parks of Cameron County, for the highways and streets and roads of Cameron County. We continue to pray for our health department. We pray for Dr. Jesus Kakiass, who is apparently our new Cameron County Health Advisor. We pray for the continued rains, the rains that are your bringing, not in any lavish form, but mild rains. We appreciate and thank you in advance for taking any and all tropical storms, hurricanes, what have you, away from our shores. We pray for today's agenda. We pray for these men and women that are devoting a good part of their life in service to the people of Cameron County. So we pray today for our county judge, for our commissioners, for our department heads, everyone that is working together for the betterment of Cameron County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The President, the Attorney General, and the Justice Department of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the perfecting of justice for all.
Do we have anybody before we come?
No.
I just want to say something before the meeting starts because I guess I'm not surprised, but I never can see to be amazed by... Shameless that Brownsville Herald is when they write articles that are just totally misrepresenting what's going on. There was an article in a paper, I think on Thursday, that talked about deterioration of the Dancy Building exterior. It was a headline article in the front page at the very top. And, you know, the viewing, more than anything else wanting the viewing public to know that what that involved, and by the way, it's something that we hadn't even heard about until we received the memo by the architect, but that involved us, out of the, how many windows there?
Roughly 200 windows.
Out of the roughly 200 windows that exist at the Dancy Building, there were three windows that had a little bit of wood rock. I mean, we're talking this much wood rock that was probably caused by the fact that we have them covered up with plywood to protect them until the building is open. And one window, was it one window that had a little bit of plaster that had fallen off, and that was it. That's a front page headline that talks about deterioration of the Dancy Building. That's the kind of stuff that this paper does, and I just wish that somebody who owns this paper would take a look at the responsibility of reporters of this paper because it really is bad. I mean, we get, the reason I raise it is because, I mean, I got phone calls about what's going on with the Dancy Building, why can't you people get it together and stuff. We've repeatedly told them that the total cost of the renovation of the project was $10 million, which is what was budgeted at that time, that all the other costs that they're talking about are unrelated to the original project. The original project was, it's a restoration project. The original project was a renovation project, didn't include a large percentage of what was done on this project. The problems that occurred initially were caused by no one on this Commissioners Court because they hired an architect that was unlicensed before any of us came on this, and it was a fiasco as a result of that. But the Herald continues to misrepresent what's going on with that building to the public, and I wish for once they would do what's right and tell people the truth because they just, you know, are repeatedly, repeatedly putting out misinformation about what has happened to this building. You go to this building, it's a beautiful building, it's within budget, we got money from the state of Texas to help fix it up, and any problems that have occurred there stem from administrations and people way, way before any of us came here. I said it in my piece, but I just wish somebody from the house sitting here listening. Okay.
All right. Well, I have something to add to that, Judge. I saw the article you're making reference to, and my concern was that, I was presented a letter here at that meeting that day, last Tuesday, that I was supposed to read and digest within about five seconds while we were having a discussion on some issues, other issues that we were having that don't pertain to this Commissioners Court. And, you know, I would appreciate it if that architect, if he had a concern with any issue at that building, it would have been brought to our, I mean, we all have email addresses, we all have telephone numbers, we all have mobile numbers, we're all available all the time.
And we could have asked him about what he was talking about.
Exactly.
And clarified for the public because we see this paragraph there, and I said, "What the heck is this all about?" And then I, finally, I told Remy after the meeting, when the article came out, I said, "What is this?" And Remy said, "It's three windows, Judge, and a little piece of plaster on one window."
Well, who did the Herald interview or get the information from?
They didn't call any of us, except Remy, I think they talked, no, no, they didn't even talk to Remy, they quoted Remy from here. And then they take discussions that pertain to the air conditioning system and the need to hire to do proper maintenance of the air conditioning system, and they apply it to the deterioration on the exterior of the building. Had no reference to that discussion whatsoever. I mean, this paper is just out of control, totally irresponsible, and, I mean, you know, they just, they're just so intent.
Well, but, you know, I need to, I think, in defense of, and I'm not defending the newspaper, and I never will defend them, they can report whatever they want, and that's what they do. But they got the information from a letter that we received Tuesday. After I read the article, I went back through my, I says, "Where is this, all these problems?" You know? Finally, there was one little line on the very bottom of what, you know, Mr. Reese had written that made reference to the caulking and the paint. And I says, "You know, I've never, I've been here going on six years, and I had not heard one thing about any issues."
So you don't think that the newspaper's description of it would be a criminal?
I think, I mean, I don't know.
Well, what they did-
The newspaper has the ink, and they have the paper, and they do whatever they want and get away with it always, you know?
Well, what happened is that they took what was reported here and just embellished it and started, I mean, unless there's some other document, that's how I would describe it. They took something and just embellished it to the point where it's not true.
And I don't know about-
I'm drafting a letter to the newspaper, to the editor, explaining where we've been with the building, what's been done with the building, where the building is now. We'll see if they publish it. Hopefully, it'll strike down all the issues that they have with us that are not accurate.
But Commissioner, well, you know, the same can be said for what you did with another issue very recently, and that was the appraisal district's values. They publish what they want.
I understand. They've got to keep trying.
Yeah. They publish what they want, you know?
Hopefully, you know, the audience that watches on Thursday night, and it seems like we have a large, that will, that will help. But it's, I don't know, it's just deteriorated, in my opinion. When I read that article, and I too compared what we had gotten, David, and it didn't, it didn't match. It was just completely embellished and-
Really bad. I mean, this reporter is out of control. Okay, that being said, I hope maybe she will sit down and her publisher will watch this program on Thursday night and realize that we're not going to let them do this without telling the public. Okay. Let me get, I know that there's a presentation, we've got one of our judges who needs to get back to work right now, and I'm in here on one of the items, and I want to get to it right away. Item number 13, consideration and action regarding the creation of a one officer pilot program. We have Judge Wise here today, and Judge, well, three of them, sorry, two walked in. I was so emotional, I didn't see you walking, Judge Sanchez and Judge Gonzalez.
Well, there was one other judge here.
Judge Muniz is here.
Somewhere, yeah.
Mina is here.
Yeah. I missed Judge Muniz, and I really was emotional, you know? But if they, I had a long conversation with Judge Wise last week about some of the issues involving some of the needs out there. One of the issues that came up was the fact that there is a lot of tickets out there that have not been paid by people who owe a lot, not just in his court, but in all the courts in Cameron County. And the thought was brought up by him, or the idea was brought up by him that, and he reminded me that this has been brought up once before, but it must have been at a time where some of all was other issues that we really didn't focus on it the way we should have. That if we create a warrant officer position for a few courts to go out there and enforce these tickets, that that'll pay for itself essentially, and I asked them to be here today to make a presentation to the Commissioners Court on this. So Judge, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Judge. Mr.-
Good morning.
Let me just start off with a little bit of historical information. About three years ago, Department of Public Safety eliminated their warrant database, and basically, in effect, what it, what it transpired into was a backlog of warrants for not just this county, but all over the state. And as a result of that, what had, what has, what that created was a stack of boxes of warrants that are beginning to, or creating a warehouse effect in all of our offices. And I'm here just to speak on my own behalf regarding my own court, and I'm sure that other JPs here can concur with that. But about two weeks ago, the constable, Precinct 5 Constable, Luis Gonzalez, assigned on a very limited basis, one of his deputies, to initiate some outstanding traffic warrants enforcement. And I say a limited basis because they really don't have that time to really focus or commit to enforcing outstanding traffic warrants. But what small work they have done has resulted in a, in being very successful. And what I brought with me this morning was an accounting report for the last 10 days of what my court has collected in traffic fines. And I would say about 45, close to 50% of this report of the last 10 days is, reflects outstanding traffic warrants. My court in the last 10 days have collected close to $25,000. And that is, it's not the norm because we've done some comparisons of the previous years for the month of July, and basically those revenues decrease, or the norm would be around $20,000. For the entire month of July, we've collected $36,000. I would say again, between 30 and 40% of that $36,000 that my court has collected in July reflects outstanding traffic warrants of the small work that the deputy constable has taken in. And again, I say small work because I ask that the constables have a deputy available to perform bailiff duties in my court when I have court, and that, that takes a big part of their time. It really does. So they're not able to really apply or commit themselves to the extent that I would like to really see them do, but it's just because of the work constraints, they're not able to do that. But as a result of many factors, what we're seeing is a warehouse effect of outstanding traffic warrants. And also, in effect, or effectively, it's, it's a revenue source, and there's an old saying that we hear as JPs in many of our training sessions, that a fine is not a punishment until it's paid. And it's really true when you stop to think about it, you know? We have a lot of outstanding traffic warrants that, you know, I think it starts to send a wrong message to the community that there's no enforcement, when in fact, there is actually literally no enforcement. So I want to thank Judge Hossa for putting this on the agenda because I know I've come before you previously a couple of times and tried to emphasize the need for a warrant officer or two. And this is, has been discussed amongst all the JPs as we meet on a monthly basis and discussing, we're in all agreement that, that the need is there. The revenues that I know that you all, at many times, are looking for are there. I think with the small collection or enforcement that my office has implemented reflects that. And I'll go ahead and pass the floor to Judge Sanchez if you would like to also share this.
Judge, I had a question, Judge. What are the consequences when they're late and then they're served with?
Let me respond by, ultimately, what we're trying to reach, I think what would result of creating a warrant officer or more than one to serve all the JPs. I think the highlight of it is that the cost of it initially, or ultimately, is what we're hoping is that it would maintain itself, and I really do believe that it would, in the very near future, once it's implemented, I don't think it would take long to realize that it would be self-sustaining. There is a warrant fee attached on top of the fine and court costs that we would apply to either whatever costs that are incurred in maintaining a program like this. I know that we also have discussed amongst ourselves that ultimately, we would like to tie the success of these collections to address increasing salaries for our clerks, and I think the judges will agree with me that that has been discussed in our meetings that, I know we have visited with you all in the past regarding our clerks' issues, and we're hoping to, once it just can be implemented, that we revisit that issue about addressing our clerk's salaries.
Thank you.
Judge?
Thank you. Good morning. $50 is the warrant fee that's added to each citation.
Is that authorized by legislation or?
By statute, yes. And basically, there's also, we've got two different scenarios on warrants. We have the warrants where people came in, they appeared at court, and they paid maybe part of it and didn't come back and pay the rest. That's where you've already had a case adjudicated. Then you've got the scenario where people just don't show up at all. In that situation, in my court, we file an additional charge called violator promised to appear. So now, rather than just having the original charge, they have to, along with the original warrant fee. So it's a substantial sum. And like Judge Wise was saying, since DPS quit their warrant database, our income that each court would have on a monthly basis actually decreased because every beginning of the month, troopers from around the state would mail in money orders with citations on warrants they had collected. Because the database is no longer in effect, that $3,000 or $4,000 that would get the month going no longer comes in. So, and those are revenues that are lost to the county that haven't been replaced. In addition, there's probably more officers on the road today than there were three or four years ago. I can tell you, in my court, I think, the year before I came into office, for the entire year, I think something like $40,000 was collected. This month alone, my court brought in $39,000, almost $40,000. So there's a lot of increase in volume out there, and if there's increase in volume of what we're bringing in, there's also increase in volume on what's staying out there. And what Judge Wise was saying is very true in terms of any positions that you can give us for these warrant officers, they will in effect pay themselves off before the end of the year is out. I mean, if the court's skeptical about doing that, there has been, I think, in La Feria, Judge, Judge, you said Rudy Delgado had worked there? Those are officers that La Feria had hired after hours or on their off time to go out and collect the warrants, to pick up people on warrants and collect outstanding fines. And the city was bringing in all the fine money, and they were paying the warrant fee to the officers. I don't necessarily know that that would work for us as a county, but just to give an example, in those situations, the county brought in, or the city, La Feria brought in a lot of money, and the officers that were working, they made money as well because they were collecting the warrant fee that was actually collected. Because as soon as an officer makes any effort, be it send out a letter, get on the phone, or actually go arrest somebody, that $50 fee is additionally imposed. If an officer doesn't do that, and the person comes in on their own, then you can't charge the warrant fee.
So when you said the lack of a database, what do you mean by that?
Well, this-
We have not, we don't have a database? I thought we had, what happened with that, that request that we did, that we approved a couple of years ago to approve that?
The software.
The software happened with it?
No, that's, what I'm talking about, the database, is DPS. DPS, whenever they'd stop somebody, they had a warrant database across the state, and they would run the person's license, and if that warrant came up, they would collect the fine.
What about now?
Three years ago, they got rid of it.
Why?
What happened, it's politics. In Austin, there's a company called OmniBase. And OmniBase basically convinced DPS, instead of having your troopers picking up people on warrants and wasting their time, let OmniBase collect. And the way they collect is, they'll go and they'll put basically a hold on your license. You don't renew your license but every six years. So you have to wait till your license is renewed, and then they deny you the renewal of your license. The problem is, half the people, or at least 20% of the people in Cameron County, drive without a license. So that's not going to help us collect anything because they don't go in and, you know, get their license renewed. And we have a lot of international traffic that, well, that'll never, that'll never affect them. So it might work in Austin, it doesn't work here. But overall, OmniBase ends up making more money because if there's less troopers collecting warrants, that's more business for them to collect, and that's what happens.
Judge Sanchez, what type of backlog do you believe you have in your office? I know Judge Wise said he's got boxes and boxes pending serving, I guess, warrants pending serving. You have, and I know that a couple of years ago, you talked about this, Judge Wise, and it's been a concern, I think, of all of us, all this time, and we're wondering, you know, where the rest of the JP's stand with the number of warrants that they may have in their offices that haven't been served and the values, if there's any way to put a value on those warrants?
Well, I've got several filing cabinets. I can't tell you boxes, but Judge Gonzalez actually, what we did, because we've addressed this situation before, and we hadn't really gotten anywhere, I spoke to Mark Yates several months ago. And what we did was, he started, he hired a couple of employees, and what they're doing is they're going in, all of the old citations that people haven't paid, he's having them logged into the computer so we can get a numeric amount of how much is actually out there. The problem is, because we just recently have put new citations into our computer system, all the old ones aren't in there yet. And until we put all the old ones in, we can't give this court an actual amount of what's out there. All the new ones are in there, and we can tell you, okay, this is how much is outstanding. But to give you all the warrants, the boxes that Judge Wise has, the filing cabinets I have, we have to go back and have them all inputted. We're talking about 11 courts, and our staffs, we don't, they don't have enough time, I mean, I've got one clerk, we don't, they don't have enough time to barely keep up with what they have to actually go back and input the old stuff. So Mark has been, I think he's got two people, and he started over on our side, I think Judge Gonzalez's court was the first one, and then he ended up moving the operation to Brownsville, and he's working on Judge Stules's court. But to tell you how long before we can get them all done, I wouldn't be able to say. I think Mark can best answer that. And I don't believe he's here today. So Judge Gonzalez might be able to give you an idea of how much is outstanding in his court. I couldn't give you a definite number.
Good morning.
Good morning.
When we started, and I'm totally disagree with the way the program started out, they were inputting everything into those warrants out of our office, out of seven, one. However, when they moved them away, they're already up to the Ms. or the Ins., and they should have finished that program first. Then they moved them over there, well, now we're stagnant there with all the old warrants up to the Ms. or the Ins. Before this all started, I knew what I wanted to do with that office was I did not want to let those warrants stay there, so I had started something up myself, trying to generate the old warrants into the computer, and I had a list, and I inputted something like 365 warrants. That's just 365 warrants that we had in there. And I was already up to a total of about $225,000. I inputted at the last, right before they started this program, I ended up with about 600 or 800 warrants in between there, and the total was up to $425,000. So there is a lot of money in those warrants-
That is your court.
That is only in my court.
Warren this court.
Because right now, they're up to the Ms. or the Ins., I don't know how far they got along, but they took those people away and started another system somewhere that they're inputting them up in another court. And I think they should have just finished one first to get an idea of how much is out there, and then they should have traveled on to another one and got those out there. And that program that we need, there, I think, with that money there, the warrant officer of whoever we hire to collect these warrants will pay for itself in his salary, or whatever vehicle he needs, or whatever, I think it'll pay for itself because these warrants, most of these warrants that we get are repeaters. People that have had two or three warrants and never paid them, they know that if they speed again, they're going to get that speeding ticket, and they won't pay that speeding ticket again. And there, now he's got four warrants in there, and nobody checked on him, especially if they catch him at night. It's not into a system to where they can say, hey, this defendant or this violator is now has three warrants there, so let me go ahead and take him in. So what happens during, unless it's during the day, and they personally take the initiative to call the office and say, hey, can you check this one for me? Of course, after hours, I won't be able to do that, and we don't have a program to where the computer will actually tell them when they check them to say, yes, he has three warrants out of Judge Gonzalez or Judge Sanchez's office or wherever. And I think what we need to do is we need to finish one office first, then go to the other one. And not that I want mine finished, but it's already up to the Ms. or the Ins., and I think it was a total of-
One month? About a month?
About a month.
About a month. So-
Remy, on the scanning that we got, we hired that company on that Evergreen contract to scan whatever departments we needed to scan in terms of the different records, is this something that would help that? I mean, if we use that system to be able to get those records into the computer so that we had that accessible, or is that something different?
It's a little different. The way, and I think we'd have to work with them to see if they could get the software to recognize the fields where it had the names, and it would really, I think some of the tickets, the, since they're carbon copies, they're probably really hard to read, and there'd be a lot of-
Well, but there's warrants, although.
Right.
The warrants are prepared by your office, aren't they?
Correct.
So there's a file of warrants in addition to the ticket that I said.
If it's, if it's on a format that's consistent, then you could set up the way to read it and get it to recognize the letters, and it could, it could help.
Can we get Ivy in and see if there's a way we can, if, I mean, even work if it doesn't, because that may be the way to do this. Instead of, you know, having to manually input all that information into the computer on a court-by-court basis, if we could just scan the warrant into the- on a court-by-court basis, if we could just scan the warrant into the computer, we could do it a lot faster, and that would pay for itself as well.
Judge, if I may, I think the problem that we're going to run into there, this is something I don't think we can get around in terms of having to input the information, because in order to process any payment when we do get the individual, that information's going to have to be input into the system, so we can have the case in the system. Because the old warrants that we're talking about are cases before our computer system, so they're not in there, and that's what's taking time to have, to add them to the system. Once they're in the system, what theoretically, eventually we could do is have our software system at the county, so when anybody gets stopped, dispatch can check, pull up on Easy Justice, run their license number, and check to see if they have any warrants in the county. Right now, they don't do that, because we don't have a method of centralizing that. But eventually, in order to get there, we're going to need to get all that information in there, and the warrant actually won't do that, it's just going to give them the name and how much.
And to add, onto that, if we do that through the county, here you have the state or somebody else working that's not attached to the county, and they probably wouldn't know whether there is a warrant or not. It has to get into a central system to where they check his driver's license, but when they run that person, that they could get a hit on the warrant. But if it's just the county, it's just going to be the county, and the DPS is always working out there, and they need, that's what we need, we need a central-type system. And, and that was the reason that, when DPS had it set up, if a county officer, anybody ran his driver's license through the state, because they're the holders of it, well, then they would get a hit on it. But if it's just through the county, we're only going to be able to get the county officers or the constables. We won't be able to get the others to get a hit on it.
And that's why you need a warrant officer, just to go out there and introduce your poison?
Correct. And if that's all they dedicate themselves to, they'll be bringing in quite a bit of revenue to the county, and imposing our punishments, the way, excuse me.
We have, we have Judge Moniz here.
Morning.
AKA La Mongara.
I'm just one of the acting generals, or judges up here already, but they already said once, I've, I've collected fines on the phone, I've called myself, I don't have anybody else except myself and my secretary, of course, the constable's busy all the time, and I've called and collected from Florida, from Houston. Hey, you got a warrant, you want me to pay up, or they're going to pick you up somewhere online? So it's your choice, what do you want to do? But we, I've called on the phone and I've collected some money, I couldn't tell you the exact amount, and I do have boxes and stuff that, warrants that we have out there also. In '95, I tried to collect some, and we couldn't get anybody to help us out, so we got off the bench, and come back on the bench, try and work on it again, and hopefully we have success this time with the cooperation of you guys and ladies.
Thank you.
As to will, will be successful at this adventure we're going to take on. But we're, we're doing our best we can as far as collecting the documents.
Judge Ortiz.
Thank you for the opportunity, I just got in, I just got called that this item was going to be before the court, but first of all, let me say good morning, Judge, good morning, commissioners. I too, my office, and I've been there, I'm on my fourth year, I do have a box about this big for each year. I'm estimating that maybe each box is probably worth, I'd say, pretty close to half a million dollars.
That's your mouth.
That, each one. That is sitting there, uncollected. They don't have warrants, we haven't issued warrants, but even if we did, what happens next?
There has to be follow-up.
It has to be followed up.
You have to tell them, Matthew.
You have to have it. I brought with me a sample of a letter that, whenever I have a chance, I send out a copy of the citation on my letterhead, and a brief message at the bottom that says the amount of money that is owed for each violation, and it says, "This is to inform you that a warrant for your arrest either has been issued, or will be issued, however the, it applies, for failure to appear," because the person hasn't come in yet to make, enter a plea, but only the person has failed to appear in answer to the citation. "If you wish to avoid going to jail, either to pay the citation or to post bond, you may immediately send to my office a cashier's check or money order in the above amount to dispose of this matter and have the warrant recalled. Please contact my office immediately if you have any questions. There will be an additional fine of $263 if the failure to appear warrant is executed and signed." And I have some good response out of this notice, but for those people who says-
What the hell?
Who just brush it off, I need something to follow up with.
Judge, I would think that, because of where you're located, and, and you can help me, I would think that maybe a pretty good percentage of yours might be people from outside the area of-
A good percentage is outside the area, but I do have a lot of local-
A lot of local.
From Brownsville, Harlington, San Benito. A lot of people travel through my-
Yes, that's, that's-
-base town, going to the island.
Yeah. Is there any way, what's the system for collecting, say, if it's a warrant for someone who lives in the Dallas area? Is there some system of transferring that warrant to someone in the Dallas area to serve that warrant to those folks?
There is no system in place.
If, if we had a warrant officer, that warrant officer could coordinate either with another warrant division or a constable's office in that area. If, for some reason, the letter didn't work, they could actually send him the warrant, say, could you come collect this warrant, please? But as a court, we don't have anyone to actually do that, it doesn't get done, but usually, law enforcement around the state will work with each other, but it takes having someone to make that initial contact.
I can tell you one thing, that if I were someone who had a pending warrant in anyone's court, in a JP court, and if an officer were to come to my door during the day and say, you-
That'd get your attention.
I mean, I'm going to respond right away.
Judge Sanchez?
Thank you.
Did you have something to add?
Good morning.
Good morning.
He's been evicted. I'm just here to back up what my colleagues have to say, the fact that we do have quite a substantial number of unpaid tickets that were there prior to my taking office, and since then, we have also been utilizing a courtesy-type letter format, and it's been working to a point, but we still have a lot of them that don't respond to, or answer that. Now, more importantly, I am being evicted, and I brought-
It's on the agenda.
It's in my mind, I brought the-
It's on the agenda.
New office that I have, the problem, have legal look at it, have for your secretary.
It's on the agenda, and legal has it, okay?
We won't let you be out of the streets.
Who do I give this to?
He's got it.
He's already-
They've got it.
They've already got it.
A revised one, okay. Let me ask you this, we, I, I, I think that there's no question that we need to create this warrant officer pilot program.
Thank you.
I'm going to propose that we, that we, that we create it, and that, in terms of the funding issue, that we asked the auditor's office to see how much he can certify, we'll start with one officer and see what-
Can I interject?
Yeah.
A little bit. I, I've not had an opportunity to ask any of these gentlemen a single question-
Oh, okay.
-in the discourse of what they have. And I have a couple of questions that, before I would commit to doing anything, I need answered. First of all, is there a statute elimination, of, statute of limitations on the warrants, like so many years under dead? No statute? So once you have a warrant that's there, it's open for as long as it needs to be?
That warrant will remain pending until there's actual-
Okay. Secondly, I know that Judge Wise, you and I had a long conversation about this about two years ago, and one of the suggestions that, that was made at that time was that there were retired law enforcement people out in the field that live in our county that know the area well, that might possibly work on a contractual basis for the county to serve warrants, thereby eliminating county employees, you know, I mean, you're going to have warrants that need to be served, and when there's a fee associated with serving a warrant, there's an impetus to serve a lot of warrants, because if you keep collecting, you know, I'm sorry?
Collected commission.
Right, you collect a commission on each warrant served. So would it not be something that we should consider to possibly, instead of having to provide, Judge, full employment, a county vehicle, a budget for gas, and all these other things, i- if we're going to pilot something, could we not pilot also possibly a program where we would hire on a contractual basis some folks to work with your offices? And allow them to work warrants, and allow them to go make those visits? And I'm, I mean, it's just something in my mind that came to mind.
And that's, that's a very good point, and I agree with you 100%, but I don't think we're at that point now. I think what we need to do is review with Mark Yates, and see what's the best, best manner to proceed, and whether, what you're describing, or whether we should hire a full-time employee. I think retired peace officers, I don't know whether, unless they sustain their commission, they're able to go out there and enforce it, otherwise, they're just retired, I mean, they can actually get recommissioned through someone. We've already made arrangements or spoken tentatively with a few of the constables that are willing to commission someone to go out there and fill this position, but I think at this point, we really do need to study it, perhaps maybe we can get proposals from other counties of how they address this issue, and then proceed from there.
What I would, excuse me, what I would want to see, following what Commissioner Garcia said, you're the ones that have the problem. And I always say, if there's a problem, go to the people that are having the problem, because they most likely will know how to solve it. So I agree with you that we should explore, and I would like for it to come from you, explore all these different scenarios, and then come back to us, but I too agree that we have to do something, and, and, and not wait very long on that.
Yeah, well, it was Judge Wise that suggested that when we met about two years ago.
That is correct, because the origin, my, my idea originated from speaking to a former officer, La Feria Police Department, who is now a county deputy, and he described to me how successful they were in La Feria, and they would do it on their, on their off-time, and the amount of collections that they, that they collected. But I think we really do need to explore, like Commissioner Garcia, see which is the best manner in which we need to proceed with this.
Judge Wise, are you, are you saying that perhaps some more communication needs to be done between Mr. Gates and yourself, to determine what actually needs to be done before, before we can put someone in place?
That's, we've already initiated discussions, as Judge Sanchez has described to you with Mark Gates, to, to get a better picture for you all, to, to try and-
Okay, then I'm going to ask, have the constables been included, or are they planned to be included in some of these discussions? Because state statute, first thing, you know, when you have duties of elected officials, county elected government, the state statute says that a constable shall execute and return as provided by law each process warrant or precept that is directed to the constable and is delivered by a lawful officer. And it goes on to reiterate that two or three more times, and what a constable's duties are. And it also, and I don't know, I know Judge Wise, I think it was, let me catch you up here, Judge Gonzalez said, I believe, that you try to have constables in your office when you're holding court, which is another part of, constable shall attend each justice court held in the precinct. Now, hopefully, those things are happening.
Serve the JP courts, and part of that service is enforcing the outstanding warrants, but because of the fact that they're limited in manpower, we're not getting that effect. They just have so many duties, and a lot of them patrol, it's just, it just seems that collection of outstanding warrants is not emphasized in a lot of law enforcement agencies. And I think that throughout the state, you'll see where counties have developed specifically warrant officer departments, and I think the county courts have a warrant officer, if I'm correct, that was implemented many years ago, and that's how they are able to enforce their outstanding. It just needs to be specialized, is what it needs.
I realize that they, they do have a lot of duties, and they do take care of a lot of issues, and they do issue tickets. When they issue tickets, apparently, it compounds a problem you have.
Right, that was the example that I used in my discussion just earlier, that one of the deputies with the Constable Five Department was assigned to, on a limited amount, a limited basis, to initiate collections, that's how my collections have increased in the last two weeks. But because of the fact that I also require them to provide me a bailiff during my hearings, you know, that limits their time, it really constrains their time, so our, our hope is to get a program going that would just specialize and be under the umbrella and the administration of all the justices of the peace, so that, the, the goal of the purpose of that remains to, true to that.
Now, excuse me, Judge, the fact that if we implement this, which I think we need to, my heavens, look at, number one, it's not just the money, people have to be held accountable, and it's like, many of you have said, that a lot of them will say, well, you know, nobody's going to come after me, and, and if we don't have follow-up, it'll continue happening. But I'm not understanding you to say that you will stop using the constable's service also to do this.
Most of the constables aren't doing it, as far as-
But I mean, they will continue helping, even though we implement this program, will they not? Because we don't want to, in, in other words, I would not want to send them the message that they no longer have that duty, that, that they still have that duty, we're just going to improve the situation.
I would hope that they would continue, and I'm certain that they will continue to help us, but there again, the fact that they don't have, I think, the manpower to actually have someone full-time enforcing outstanding traffic warrants is, is the issue, they just don't have that manpower. And we really want to stay focused as JP's, that that purpose of the goal is, is, is main there, and that is to play.
But it would seem, though, that these individuals, if we go to the process of hiring, and would work through a constable's office to get the job done?
If they don't get promoted off to something else.
They would have to be commissioned peace officers.
Right, but they would need, I mean, it would make sense to, to utilize existing, existing statute to do, it's just, the, the constable would just need to agree to have these folks working nothing but warrants, if we go to a full-time individual.
Let me interject on that, because that's the problem here. I mean, I, I think our constables do an outstanding job, and I know that they're, I agree with Judge Wise, that they're stretched, pricked in as it is. The issue here is the ability to focus on one particular issue, and the control of the person that is focusing on that particular issue. You know, we, we've got warrant, we've got constables that do a lot of enforcement of warrants, executive warrants, I mean, I know, for example, in this Brownsville area, the major, major component of what the constable does here is that, in other areas, our constables are more involved in patrolling and law enforcement issues and so forth, that are not involved with warrant issues. They're all trying the best they got with the limited resources that they've got. It is much too easy, if you put them under a, put a warrant officer under a constable, for a constable to be tempted to redirect the efforts of a, of a deputy warrant officer to non-execution of warrant issues. So you really need someone under the control of the JP's that are going, that is going to be focusing only, solely on the issue of executing these warrants. Whether that person is commissioned under a constable, or whether that person is commissioned under the sheriff, I tend to believe that it would be better, in order to appoint persons, since you're going to start with one or two people for a group of JP's at a time, that it be, that, that person be commissioned directly to the sheriff, because that way you have it centralized in terms of the commissions, and I think that's one of the issues that we've been talking about in terms of, of the bailiffs and so forth. But that they are employed by the JP's, whether one administrative JP, or a group of JP's, or however you do, and that they answer directly to the JP's, and not to a constable. Constables do, I'm not, and this is not, in no way critical of what the constables do, but they've got a lot of pressures on them as well, that, to, to do other issues, and it is too hard for them to have someone that is there available, and they would not use them for other things that would come up. If an emergency comes up and they gotta do patrol or they get a series of burglaries on one particular colonia and they need to make sure that those are enforced, what happens is that they're gonna grab that warrant officer and they're gonna put him over there. And you can't blame them for doing that. But if you do that, then we get affected here in this, in what we're trying to do here. So, I don't, you know, one, to answer Commissioner Woods' question, why are the constables not doing that? That's why, I think it's that, why are we doing it this way as opposed to using the constables? I think that's why, it's an issue of control and an issue of limited resources that the constables have. But why we would not put it directly under the constables is a different issue that I think is affected by the same constraints that you have as to why the constables can't do it right now. That's a very complicated way of saying it, but I think you know what I'm talking about. So, you know, and I think that, you know, if someone were out there that could do this on a commissioned basis, that was able to be commissioned, that would be an effective way of doing it. But I don't know how you work the logistics of a private company having an individual commissioned to be able to go out and arrest people. That's kind of not very easy to work out. I think that the way to do it is to hire somebody that's gonna be commissioned under the sheriff, that's gonna be working for the JPs directly, one or more persons, and that's just gonna be focusing solely on getting out there and bringing people in. Now, let me give you, say two things. One, we have done something similar to this in the past, and it had enormously a positive effect. And you were very familiar with Commissioner Tamara. We did the truancy program where we hired deputy constables on their own time or reserve constables on their own time. And we worked out contracts with school districts, and we sent them to the homes of kids that were unexcused absent. And we told the school districts, you pay their gas and you pay their extra time. We'll start off with a grant, and then after that, you pick it up. The school districts were clamoring for it. In fact, it paid for itself more than that because of the ADA money that was being sent, we were getting as a result of these kids showing up to school. What would happen is if deputy constable uniform showed up at this kid's house, that kid didn't skip anymore, I promise you. Remember, you know, it worked effectively. In fact, it worked so effective that in San Manito, where Commissioner Tamara was on, they took over the program. They took it away from us and did a great job in implementing. The same principle applies here. You really need a uniform officer knocking on somebody's door, like someone said, and saying, "Hey, you gotta pay your ticket." Now, the side consequence to this thing, that a little bit of a problem, is that the hammer, it creates problems for us in our jail because we're overcrowded in our jail. And for this thing to work, this warrant officer has to be able to say, "Pay up or we're gonna put you up," you know. And the problem is that once that guy gets, if he doesn't have any money to pay up or refuses to pay up and he gets thrown in jail, then we're paying, you know, $40 a day to house these guys in the county jail. And so, that's the only thing that I'm a little bit concerned about.
Well, they'll put them into the prisoners program to do work for the counties.
If I may address that, a couple of years ago, when we were rotating covering for Judge Torres, I was, I was working with the DA's office and collecting hot checks. And we would deal with, we called the hot check roundup. And several law enforcement officers would go out early in the morning all over the county, and we coordinated with the jail. And they would go and pick these people up, like at 7:30 in the morning. And of about 80 people that they brought in, I would say about 75 of them, by the end of the day, when I'd go to the jail at 6 o'clock to magistrate them, had already paid up, okay? Traffic citations, I think, are the same way. And we don't actually need to have that officer take them to the jail. We have, like in LaFerria, we have a holding cell. In Harlingen, they can take them before the judge, and even if they hold them in the courtroom. But that warrant officer would have the time to sit there with that person. And I think the mere fact that they just take them into custody, that person will say, "Well, can we go by the ATM?" Or, "They're gonna cost somebody." A lot of these people, a lot of these people that get these citations aren't gonna be your hardened criminals. They're people that are you and me, everything they work, and either they just forgot about it or they disregard it, not realizing, "Uh-oh." But if a uniform officer shows up at their place of employment or catches them in their driveway on their way to work, they're gonna make every effort to get that paid up.
And I'll go back to what I said earlier. The fact that we have taken no action just motivates people to do exactly what they're doing, not paying.
I have five, three warrants.
Yeah, I can just about guarantee that once this is implemented, in a couple of years, we won't have the problem.
One question I have that's a side issue completely. We have two of our JPs, our former DPS troopers, and a couple of them, I mean, I know Judge Wise was a deputy sheriff as well. Were you also a deputy, right? How much time? I know we all were in law enforcement. But one of the questions in terms of logistics that I have is, and I think the warrant officer thing should be created. We need to start structuring and see how we're gonna pay for it and how big and so forth, and how it's gonna be set up. But assuming that we're able to get this information into our computer files so that our law enforcement agents, agencies have that in their computers, why is that not automatically picked up by DPS? Why doesn't that go into their computer system automatically? If we input that information into some database that's out there, why doesn't DPS automatically pick that up as a warrant coming out of the county, you know?
They got rid of the DPs.
Judge Gonzalez and Judge Sanchez are both former troopers.
Well, first of all, mainly because of the reason that when you have it in the computer system here within the county, that does not go into DPS. And you have to get a system where it is inputted or tied into the DPS system because any law enforcement agency can run an individual with his driver's license number, name, or date of birth, and they will, in essence, get a hit. But since right now DPS doesn't have their warrants in there, and no other county has them.
So DPS doesn't have their own warrants in there either?
That is ridiculous.
Drop that system.
Oh, okay, that's what I didn't understand. I thought they just weren't, were not picking up everybody.
And I'll tell you now that even before when they had their datmack system, you could check it, and you would not be able to get Cameron County warrant unless he was entered in through TCIC or NCIC, which would mean that he would have a Class B or above.
Okay, that's why I didn't ask you, because I knew that, I've had friends, you know, or I've heard of situations where they picked up somebody on a ticket and then they get arrested on a warrant, you know, like a driving with suspended license warrant. But that's a Class B and above, so that's why that's in the system. So it doesn't include tickets.
Right, and not anymore. And of course, if the county stopped one and they kind of figured, well, maybe he has a DPS warrant, they would have to check with communications with DPS. They would check it through their system, and they say, "He has DPS warrant." Well, then they could arrest him. But it takes that initiative to check with the other agencies. Because right now, nobody knows. I mean, you can check one, unless he's on the Omni system that Judge mentioned before. If they have some contract with DPS, and what happened is, they are collection agencies. But they have a contract where if they don't get a response from these people, DPS has a contract with them to where they flag his driver's license number, name, and date of birth. And then when he goes to renew it, they'll give him a 1-800 number, which goes back to that agency. There's some with smaller counties that are on the Omni base. And there's three or four others.
Kennedy County.
Yeah, Kennedy County is on it. But there's a lot of bases that are out there, but I don't know the rest of them. Omni is the most known.
Well, why don't we do this? What I'd like is a resolution from the Commissioners Court stating that we approve the creation of a pilot program. What I'd ask the JPs is to go back and give us a structure on how you want to do it. Talk, get some definitive answers from Mark on the revenues that he can certify on that. And that way, we can determine how much, how many and how much money to put into it. And we're talking about, a warrant program is not only gonna involve salaries, it's gonna involve vehicles, you know, the operations and maintenance of the vehicles. It's gonna probably involve some clerical staff as well. I mean, if you're gonna do it the right way, if you're talking about the numbers that you've got, just with the examples that have been given by Judge Gonzalez and Judge Wise and the other JPs that are out there, we're talking about a significant amount of money that can generate enough income to be able to set up a department to be able to not only generate the income but enforce the laws of the state of Texas. So, what I would ask, if it's all right with y'all, it's like Commissioner Tamara said, y'all are the ones that are familiar with the problem. Give us your concept on the design of a program. Come back to us when you've got that along with financial information from the Auditor's Office. And then we'll go ahead and approve the creation of the program as soon as you're ready. Is that fair, or do you want to do this a different way?
I probably agree with that. I think you're doing the research, and you have a good picture of what we need. We can come back to it.
And I would recommend that you be open to the utilization of contractual-based employees if that's an avenue that can be used.
Absolutely, consider that often.
That'll be part of the research. And but when you get, when you come back to us and with your recommendation, I would like, just from my own information, in case people call me and ask me, "Why did they make that decision?" With your justification. Because if you do research, you're gonna have a justification for your decision on what structure to use.
Okay, well, that's my request for a resolution. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tamara, is there a second to that motion?
This is to consider the creation, right?
The creation.
And allow them to bring us?
To create a pilot program as designed by the JPs and funded on the amounts certified by the Auditor's Office.
I'll second that.
And to provide us with a structure that is gonna be followed.
Right, that's the motion. There's a second, enter the discussion. Almost as fair as signified by today.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go back to our agenda. Presentation by Mr. Enrique Pettis, District Administration Administrator, Lieutenant Lieutenant, new nutrition program. Dr. Pettis?
Yeah, good morning, Honorable Judge and Commissioners. We thank you for giving us the opportunity this morning to introduce a new hire within our agency. And in doing this, we have Rosla Giel, which is part of our staff, and you all know her, family consumer science agent. And also Dr. Ruben Saldana, which will do the introduction of the new hiring for our agency and talk a little bit about our program and what her responsibility and role will be in serving the people here in Cameron County.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ruben Saldana, District Administrator. I'd like to introduce you to Beatriz Rodriguez. She's gonna be our new extension agent for the expanded nutrition program. The office is in Harlingen, but it has overall responsibilities for the entire county. Ms. Rodriguez is a Brownsville native and got her degree in food science from Incarnate Word. She starts today, but we thought we'd make the trip down here to introduce you to her. We're proud to have her on board and proud that you, or glad that y'all were able to come down here and introduce her to you. The expanded nutrition program is, we started in 1969 through federal funds and provides nutrition education. We've found that the program, for every dollar that is spent on it, extends family dollars by $3, and it reduces healthcare costs by 12. So obviously, people that eat better, make better choices, their money goes further and they eat better, they, they're healthier longer. And we look forward to many good years with Ms. Rodriguez's leadership there in our ENP office. Appreciate you taking time this morning.
And where will her, where will your office be? What, what's your home base?
The office is in Harlingen.
In Harlingen?
It's on Jefferson, 1808 Jefferson.
Of a fair part.
Yes, sir.
We're familiar with your office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Item number three?
I got a correspondence from Pete Sapola. He is required to be at another meeting. He asked to table that item.
Move to table.
Second.
Moving to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is tabled. Item number four, same request?
No, Ernesto's gonna report.
Oh, good. I don't know if Pete wanted to be here for that one, too?
Pete asked me to attend this meeting this morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm trying to keep it short. This is just a status report on the colonial program for roads and drainage improvements. And in front of you, there should be a spreadsheet, which we presented to you sometime last month, I guess, or a month ago. And basically, what we want to do is just give you an update as to where we're at, and I'm not gonna keep it too long other than if you have any questions. But attached with the spreadsheet is also a site location map in case you're interested where the colonias are located at. First, we have Encantada, but the left-hand side, upper corner or left-hand side corner, third column, you have Encantada, Tierra Bonita, Lozano, Lauro, Espasa, Unit 1, 2, and 3, and so on. Fourth, down the line, the column, and these projects, like I said, are based on population, as however they were selected and allocated. And the further, left section here, down the same column, you have a competitive call projects, which is Galpen, Ormito, and Riverford, Harlem, Puches, and Laguna Heights. The main interest is on your far right-hand corner of your last column. You have pretty much the updated activity of the colonial projects. Starting off with Encantada, we had a pre-construction conference on June the 15th. We're about 80% complete on that. We have two full-time work crews working already, and they're proceeding forward with construction. Quad is subdivision, we're about 60%. That's the last one of the population-based allocated projects. We're about 60% on that.
Is that a little slower than anticipated?
No, we're actually, we're pretty good now with the two crews.
Okay.
So, this second crew has...
That made all the difference in the world.
Yes, it has.
That second crew was adding.
I think this will move the projects a lot faster. On August 17th, we'll have a pre-construction for Tierra Bonita, 1 and 2, and also Espasa units, 1 and 2. So with that second crew, we're gonna move a little bit faster. So we should have some pre-construction then forward with construction. All the others are, you'll have the dates there on when we project to start the other projects. Ormito, which is one of the competitive bid projects, we're about 95%, 98% complete on plans. Hopefully, with the second crew, once we get through with the upper part, we'll start with Ormito and Riverford, Harlem. So other than that, I think we're doing fine. I think we're gonna start seeing a lot more progress, and we'll keep you updated. And primarily, that's what we want to do this morning, just keep you updated. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I have questions about the status of the program in general. I need to get in my own mind where we're at in terms of the first and second call. I know that the second call went out, the contracts, I mean, the awards were made by DPS Department of Public Safety. The third call has not gone out yet?
Not yet. I think you ought to start coming out with an announcement for the third call, and then you'll submit, but I don't know the status as to where the funding's gonna come from. Remember, that's one of the things that was allegedly...
The funding is allocated, is allocated?
Yes. So sometime in June, July, this couple of months from now, it should be announcement for the third call. And then we'll resubmit a list of colonias that haven't either not been approved or intended to be approved, you know, the ones that haven't been...
But let me ask you this. As I understand, just to clarify again, the third call is going to include the third phase of funding for Cameron Park, right?
Right, that's correct.[1770.32] That's correct.
Now, related to that, is it possible for us, in the third call, to ask for more money for Laguna Heights, or was the proposal that it was approved sufficient to complete the paving in that colonia? Because, you know, that's a large colonia, you know, 900,000-- Necessary there. And I'm wondering whether or not, when we complete the design, where are we at on the design process for the second call?
For Cameron Park?
Yeah, no. Have you started on that?
Yeah, Rutherford Harding, the, well, called the second call, which is part of Michigan, the south, the north side of really the Rutherford Harding, Laguna Heights. We're about, somebody just turned in some plans, we're about 90% complete on plan, design.
Right.
So once we complete the design, we're pretty much ready--
What about the south side of Highway 1?
The south side, it's only going to be a small portion, only that which was left from, I think it includes five streets or five streets--
And Pennsylvania.
And Pennsylvania.
Including Pennsylvania. But how much of that, has that been designed out?
Yes.
The south side?
Yes.
Okay.
Those, not the north sides.
Has there been a cost estimate given for that?
Yes, yes.
And is it above the 900,000?
Well, actually, they allocated less than that, but we're trying to fit it within the requirements of the state, which they say you cannot spend more than $200,000 per mile. That that's the restriction. And so we have to include the roads and the drainage altogether not to exceed that. And we had submitted for 900,000 estimate, but we actually got a little bit less. I think Commissioner Gresson knows we, I think we got 800,000, that's what we allocated.
856.
856. So we're a little short, but we can make it work. Now, to add more money to that, I think that's more of a request that the court would have to make to Texas, I guess, for additional funding.
Because I just don't see how you can pave all what you want to pave with the 857,000--
Well, it's going to be very--
And do that. And I would like, are we going to do that in-house?
We're going to do that in-house.
And so where are we going to start on that?
2008 is when they have it scheduled.
For funding?
December, starting.
For construction?
2008.
And the reason, yeah, the reason being is that--
That's a timeline.
Remember that we only have two crews, and we're going to commit crew number two to Almito, which is going to take a year to construct. And so it's like--
How much do we get for Almito?
Almito's six miles. Nine miles.
3.5 million.
3.5.
It's 3 million dollars.
We asked for seven. We're going to do, going to have to do it differently.
Turn a little over 3 million. I could even put that in your campaign ads. I mean, you ended up getting 12 million dollars for your precinct. Very good, John.
You could have worked against it.
Did the whole thing.
You cost me more money on newspaper advertising.
One of the competitive projects.
You're pretty much on schedule.
Yes.
That's the thing.
We're catching up. I think we're now, we're right where we should be. We're projecting a little further out than we need to, but if we can work a little faster, we'll--
Okay, I just wanted to know when that third phase is coming up and whether or not there was consideration being made to add enough money to finish up Laguna Heights. I mean, I just, really, it's one of those kind of things where I continue to want to see if there's a way for us to be able to cover up those ditches somehow and spend the extra money to do that. And I know that what you're saying, Texas Department put some unreasonable restrictions on what we could do there, and essentially left us in a position of putting colonia-style roads--
Yes.
Colonias, which is, in my opinion, really short-sighted on their part, but I guess they were concerned about, you know, the limited money that was out there with the increased needs, so--
Sure.
But I really want to look at that and see if there's a way to do that, to make sure that we get that colonia enough money to do the roadwork the right way.
Okay. I'll talk to Pete and see if we can set up a meeting with Mario Flore and see what--
And our engineers that are working on that. And Commissioner Gatsa, obviously.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
I walked into State over in El Ranchito. I was there yesterday.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion to--
Judge, the only comment I wish to make is the third call might be further away than we want it to be, because unfortunately, statewide, we're spending our money in Cameron County, and we're doing a lot of work, and we're paving a lot of streets. But unfortunately, in many other parts of the border area, work on Phase 1--
Hasn't even begun.
Hasn't started. We have a neighbor in county, not in Iowa, but another one, that received a very large amount of money, and they haven't even started to spend the first call that they got. So--
There should be a timeline that if it's not spent--
There is, but one simple little letter to Texas gives you another extension, and they just keep getting extensions after extensions. And that's legislated.
I think we should address that.
Yeah, and we have been.
Well, I mean, they've got a move. If they don't, we'll try and get that money.
They don't need it, we do.
That's right.
The legislation provided that there were limitations to how long you could hold on the money without spending it, but they've gotten extensions. So it was difficult to get even the second call done, and it was only thanks to the efforts of the young lady in Brownsville, Linda McKenna, who serves on that commission that sells the bonds for the state, that we were able to get some input into moving that process along and allowing it to occur when it did. Texas Department wanted to delay it even more, so--
Well, I know that the people in Laguna Heights, as well as the people in Cameron Park, are a little hesitant, particularly about whether or not that third section is going to be done, and they believe somehow that it's not. I don't know how many times we've gone out there to assure them that it is, and they're just kind of dubious about it because they've just waited so long. All right, there's a motion to acknowledge report.
Six.
I made the motion. Or you made the motion, seconded the motion by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, annual salary schedules, and questions concerning comments, complaints, or motion to--
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gatsa. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, but Javier, do you have something else?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Minutes. June 30th, special meeting. Are you all ready on that?
Yes.
Right, there are motion to--
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamara, seconded by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Claims. We've been submitted any questions concerning comments, complaints. Do I hear a motion to--
Legal.
Motion by Commissioner Wood. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. I don't know whether we, at the beginning of the program, mention was made of Memo Perez passing--
No.
It was not.
No.
And I apologize for not doing that. We did send a letter to his family, offering our condolences. Memo Perez, just let me just--
Can we, I just turned in Nefah David on the warrant. 00164155, just--
And I have--
Can I have that in one?
You know, Memo Perez died unexpectedly last week. He was 49 years old. He was the executive director or the manager of the Laguna Madre Water District, and he'd been there two or three years, but worked there for many, many years. Memo was an outstanding member of the Laguna Madre community. He was a city commissioner for a number of years. He was one of the founders of the Boys and Girls Club there, was involved in Little League Baseball. He was involved, he was a fire, a volunteer firefighter. In fact, had been very involved with a fire chief that passed away during the Cosway collapsed. Outstanding community leader, founding man. We'll sort of miss him. And I'd like to, at some point, see if we can honor his time here on Earth with a resolution by the Commissioners presented to the family once they get past the early 3:00 of the morning, and I'll be bringing that back. Forgot to mention that at the beginning, but just wanted to make sure people acknowledged his passing. Okay, claims, do we vote on that already?
Yes.
Consideration and approval of reclassification of certain legal sectors for the Civil Legal Department. Is there any questions on that?
So moved.
Second. Second by Commissioner Tamara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Both motions carries. Nine, consideration and possible approval of an agreement with Transport America LLC for expedition service for the Cameron County Sheriff's Plan. Here's--
The agreement has been reviewed and approved.
Any question on that? Who's been doing this for us?
Morning, Judge. Commissioner. That agreement has been there probably in the legal department quite some time. We know that deal is out right now temporarily, but that has been approved quite some time. I think we looked at the other people that do the transporting, and they were the better choice as far as that concerned. We use some of officers because, if you know, because he saves money when we do transporting people from, let's say, San Antonio, Houston, and sometimes we do get the bench warrant. Bench warrants come from district judges. All the county court a lot judges, and they require us to bring him from one day to the next. Transport, sometimes 10 days notice. And we use them really to bring him from out of state or maybe from Dallas or those places. But locally, and I say locally, I'm talking about San Antonio and Houston, we use our own people. Things, that's where we save money.
So then the intent is to continue doing that, Sheriff Lucio?
Yes, we do. It's easier and cheaper if they're bringing people. We bring people sometimes from Michigan, Ohio. This is a request by the judges and district--
But the contract states that they can, are both, will operate interstate and interstate.
Yes, and we do use them sometimes because sometimes our officer tied up somewhere else, or they happen to be bringing somebody else. Let's say they're bringing somebody from San Antonio, and at the same time, they've got to pick up someone in Corpus, so we can use those transport to bring in those people.
In their cover letter, they indicate that back in 2005, they did 63 successful moves for Cameron County. I don't know whether they're coming or going, but apparently they've done some work for us, and it's worked out well for us.
So far, it has. Yeah, we've used them before, there's no question about it, Commissioner.
So we use them without a contract?
Well, when you have a contract, sometimes you can get a 30-day extension, and there's no problem. Am I correct in that, Richard?
Yes, you can, certainly, if the contract calls for it, but I don't, I just approved this contract, so I really don't, I can't address the prior contract.
I did, I was the one that worked on that contract, and probably my force can probably address any kind of other questions.
You have money in your budget to take care of this, though, Sheriff.
I'm sorry?
You have the money in your budget to take care of this.
Well, we, we do have the money, although sometimes--
Habera said yes.
Habera said yes.
I made a move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Thank you, Sheriff.
District Court's offices requested that we table item 10.
Do I hear a motion to table item 10 by Commissioner Wood? Second by Commissioner Tamara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
11, consideration approval of Tobacco Compliance Plan Award from the Texas Department, Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts for Cameron County Constable Precinct 2.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner--
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. Set me for discussion. All those in favor signify by standing aye. Consideration possible adoption, possible action regarding orders adopting changes to the Dune Protection Plan.
Judge, if I may, I met with the attorney for the GLO and Commissioner Fisher with the GLO yesterday. They suggested we table this one week. They have an order they drafted that they would like us to look at. They emailed it to me yesterday, and I just got back from San Antonio late yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, and so I would suggest we table--
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by standing aye. Motion carries. Item number 14. Oh, by the way, going back to the Dune Protection Plan, I just want to let y'all know, we did receive notification under the, this is related to that, under the Coastal Impact Assistance Program, that out of the projects that we submitted for funding, four out of the seven were determined to be eligible.
Right.
$400,000 for Adolph Tomé Boat Run, 1.2 million for the Adolph Tomé Shoreline Restoration Project--
Just to finish what we had not done.
Right. 2.2 million for the Bahina Grande Restoration, and 196,000 for Boca Chica Maintenance, which is a total of 2.9 million dollars that we--
That's wonderful.
So that's good news, and we should, we're going to be getting that. As I understand, a million-dollar allocation, so how does that work?
The first year is five, isn't it?
Javier? Or we get the whole amount the first year?
Well, that's just the state money that, my word, the non-districtinary money, the million dollars is going to come to us a later date. So we submit these by September, I think it was 26.
We'll get going.
Which would be a total of about 5 million total.
Correct.
All right. Is there any supplemental items? Remi?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're 14. Consideration possible life and variety consultation services for interior plan, design plan for the Cameron County Mexican Pathology, San Benito and Portillo.
Judge, we are nearing completion on the Portillo project, and there are a couple of offices that are, one or two offices that need some, just purchasing of desks, and then also the reception area needs some furniture. And in thinking that we also have the Harlingen Annex Project underway and the San Benito Annex under construction, that it might be to the county's interest to have on, as it's available to itself, the consulting services for the interior designs to make sure that we're getting adequately furnished offices. A lot of departments are moving some of their furniture, such as the extension office has just acquired some furniture through an A and M brand that they wanted to move over, but there could be some departments that would need to buy additional pieces of furniture. In order to coordinate it and make sure that it's consistent with the color schemes that have already been selected with the building, we thought it might be to our advantage to see if we could go forward with acquiring consulting services for the interior design. Probably require that we go out for requests for proposals or qualifications. We had hoped that we could use the services of the interior designer for the Dancy Building, Megamorphosis, but she's under contract with Rebecca Reese and not the county directly, so we can't just add that project onto that existing contract. But we really were wanting to see if we could direction from the court as to how they'd like to proceed for getting these services.
Why, can I ask you this? I mean, just a simple question. Why do we need to get an interior design person to come into a small building like this, where we don't have restrictions from the Historical Society and so forth? Why can't we get, why do we have to pay somebody for that? Why don't we just get somebody from the auditor's office and my senior's office to go out there and figure out what needs to be done, just do it?
In conjunction with whomever, whatever department's going to be--
That's right. I mean, why?
Is there, excuse me?
I'll finish.
Good. Has there been an inventory made as to who's taking the furniture and who's not? I mean, do we know to what extent we would have to be purchasing?
That's one of the services that she provided, or that Megamorphosis provided when we were out, when we were putting together the move over to the Dancy Building. That involved, you know, obviously, it was a special character of the building that we wanted to use her services to make sure that the furniture was appropriate and that, you know, that each of the departments had exactly what they needed for, to provide their function, which is the service that she really provides for us, and just the consistency in the buildings, to have an educated eye looking at these things versus, you know, just departments saying, well, I need a desk, and so, you know, there's a dark cherry in one office, and then-- And so, you know, there's a dark cherry in one office and then, you know, light ash in another office. And, you know, just it's a sense of balance. It's something that the court can consider. I mean, we're not...
I don't know to what extent.
You know, I know that I visited with Remy on this issue a couple of weeks ago because we went, a couple of us went to Port Isabel and saw some of what they were wanting, or some of what they had to take into that office. And I don't think that, you know, World War II military surplus needs to be moved into a brand-new, modern office.
And I agree with you.
So how do we go about it?
Well, you know, I mean... Go out there, get Mr. Forbes, and get Remy, and get Benioch. And you go out there, and y'all find some nice furniture to buy.
You just give us direction from the church...
Well, get...
The court.
I mean, you're highly intelligent, all of you. I can go out there and figure this thing out.
Okay.
Well, again, I interrupted again. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I go ahead?
Don't use...
The one thing, though, I would think, is that whoever's in those... It's gonna go into those buildings, give the feedback as to what they want.
Yeah, when... Well, yeah, it's the process of determining what furniture you have that would move over easily and that. I mean, it's a matter of discussing it.
If that's the direction with the court, that's fine, no problem.
Y'all can do that, and fine, just do it the right way.
Okay.
There can be some parameters established on, you know, trying to keep things the same.
Use your good judgment and your good taste and, you know, take your wife out.
Marcelino?
Y'all get... Y'all figure this thing out.
I have no problem with that. I just wanted to make sure that the direction was from the court.
That's the direction that I would think we should do.
I think that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a committee. Marcelino?
Do you hear motion to give that direction to Commissioner Garcia?
No, to Mike Forbes, okay? I'll just be there.
With feedback from the people...
From the individuals.
The individuals that will be occupying the offices.
And some of the individuals... No, some of the individuals already have their furniture that they want to move, and it's adequate, like Judge Ochoa. But then some of the constable, you know, it's like World War II surplus. We could... Tony Zaire already has his furniture, because he's having to build the suit.
Okay, well, do an inventory and see who needs furniture and who doesn't, and...
Present a furniture plan to the...
End of story.
What you decided to order, and then we'll do it now.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion for that?
Motion to table by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner... Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I. Both motions carries. Consent items, items 15 through... 28, travel items, 29. Do you hear any questions concerning comments, complaints?
I have a question on 17. There's a change order which doesn't involve any monies, but it involves time, almost, well, basically doubling the time for the project. Is there... How did this come about to where the time is doubled?
Let me... I guess...
Okay. Well, we can go to another one, Judge.
Yeah, one another.
Do you have one?
Yes, I have number 26.
Okay, that's consideration approval to authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to negotiate a contract with LNG engineers and PSI for geotechnical services.
You know, there was a committee there that ranked those companies. And one of the companies that was ranked higher than possibly some of the recommendations was not included, Judge.
Which one company was that?
Cobblestone. In the past, we've used three companies at a time to rotate with. And I visited with Pete Spurda, he didn't have a problem. We could just add that company as one of the rotational companies into the contract.
He doesn't have a problem?
No, he does not.
Okay, that's fine.
But why was... And I wish Pete was here, because, you know, he's the one that works with his companies all the time.
I asked Pete, and he says the only reason he didn't recommend the other company was he had not worked directly with them.
He uses...
He uses LNG and PSI a lot.
And I thought... I mean, I know LNG and PSI do a lot of good work. So I was happy with two rotation companies instead of three, but...
I hate to experiment with someone we haven't worked with and don't have a track record on.
And the opportunity was never well.
How can they? Well, you know, the work... They've done a lot of work for the city of Harlingen. And I made a couple of calls to Michael Brown in particular at the airport. And they have had absolutely no problems with anything they've done there.
We're gonna add them on and see how it produces for us.
And if there's three people in the rotation and one is not producing, they just don't get code.
That's right. Or the other two.
So I'd like to take it separately and amend or include...
Just include it in there prior to the motion.
Okay.
Remy, what happened to...
He's right here.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. What number was that?
That was 17.
17? Yes, sir. What was the question?
The change order doesn't involve any money, but it doubles the time. It's a change order of time. How did the doubling of time come about?
According to the project engineer who worked with MB Tech, John Clint, they've had some problems getting delivery of materials for a lift station that's part of the project. He indicates in his correspondence that this has been happening a lot, not only on this project. It doesn't affect our contract with the state. It doesn't increase the price, and we don't have to take issue with it.
Well, yes, I understood, you know, looking at it, there's no money involved. It's just twice as long.
Yeah, it's...
Raises some questions.
It's just an unforeseen situation.
Okay. What else? Any other comments, questions, concerns on the consent and travel items? Do you hear motion?
Still a D S here?
Constable Diaz?
Oh. You have item number 19 for a reserve deputy?
Good morning.
My name is Miguel Rodriguez.
Yes, sir. The constable, ask your excuse in this morning, Pablo Sanchez there with the constable.
Do you have any questions?
I just kind of adopted my own way of thinking about when I vote on reserve deputies.
Yes.
If the constable or his representative, in this case you, is not here, then I'm not gonna vote in favor of them.
But you're here.
But you're here, so I'm fine with it. Thank you. You've gone through all the process, and he's been looked at.
Yes, sir.
He's licensed, and everything is inappropriate. And Mr. Villalde has confirmed that with his putting it on the agenda, but I just...
And that's another reason why he can't be serving the warrants.
Because he's...
Because he's having to be here.
All right. Did you hear motion? Do you hear...
Yeah.
The consent and travel items as amended...
Judge, I want to state your amendment is 26, so it's clear for you.
The amendment on 26 is to add Cabo... What is it called?
Cobblestone.
Cobblestone into the rotation list.
Well, I sort of want to make sure that they're monitored closely, because I didn't get any information on them. That I was...
Well, it was on the evaluation form that we got ranked higher than the other two.
Well, but I like to hear from people that have used them.
Why don't we table that one until...
I feel a lot more comfortable.
And then we can come back and talk about it. Because I mean, I don't...
I don't feel comfortable with that.
I discussed it with Pete, and he didn't have any problem with it at all. I'd like to go ahead and see it. Get done if possible. I don't either. I don't see what...
I want to table it.
Actually, you're authorizing the negotiations and contracts. The contracts will be brought to court.
Back for approval.
No.
What do you want to do?
I want to move to approve.
I'll second. If you're gonna take that one.
Okay, let's just take that one out of order, okay? And then we'll table from there.
26.
The motion on 26 is consideration approval to authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to negotiate a contract with LNG engineers and PSI for geotechnical services. It's a motion to approve by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion?
To include...
To include Cobblestone.
Right.
All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay, so motion fails. All right, item number... The rest of the consent items, 15 through 9. Okay, can we just table that then for a week since it's due?
It failed, so it's table that amendment.
Is that the way it works?
It's gotta be brought back, yeah.
I move on the other items, Judge.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motion to go on executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner... Second by Commissioner Garcia. Motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 31A, possible action on control of legal counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of real property for the Dancy Building Innovation Project. Motion to acknowledge report of Richard Walker.
Richard Walker. So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tamal. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. 31C, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of land for a proposed park in Paloma Precinct Four. Do you hear motion to...
Acknowledge report of Javier Mendez.
My Commissioner Wood. Second by Commissioner Tamal. Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. 31C, possible action regarding deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of right-of-way for the Westboro project. Motion to acknowledge report of Commissioner John Wood.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Tamal. Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. 31A, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 158 for Primeta Road project in Primeta Precinct Four area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of the property for the sum of $1,326. Motion by Commissioner Wood. Second by Commissioner Tamal. Any further discussion? All those affairs can be brought by State and I.
Aye.
Motion carries. 31E, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 125 for Primeta Road project in Primeta Precinct Four area. Motion to authorize the acquisition of the property for the sum of $883.[1533.34]